Today, we will be starting with an invocation by Maggie Crawford. And following that, we will be citing the four-way test together, which might be apropos for our debate today. Maggie?
Thanks, Julie. Use your voice for kindness. Your ears for compassion. Your hands for charity. Your mind for truth. Your heart for love. And in a world where you can be anything, be kind.
Thank you, Maggie. And now, either on the banner or on the screen, we will be saying the four-way test together, which is a pillar of how we do things at Rotary. So of the things we think, say, or do, is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? You may be seated. We have one little bit of... Oh, actually, excuse me. I got ahead of myself. So for those of you in the room, and we are streaming this on KXLY, so anybody who's streaming in to watch the debate today, a special thank you to KXLY for helping us do that today. And for those of you who are not familiar with Rotary or what we do, we are people of action who unite for good. Rotary is an international organization that champions peace, health, and education through fellowship and service, using our resources to make our community and world a better place. Spokane Rotary Club 21 was established in 1911, and the 21 stands for we were the 21st club in the world, and there are 46,000 Rotary Clubs around the world. We have 190 leaders from Spokane who are dedicated to service above self. You can learn more about who we are, what we do, or how to get involved at our website, RotarySpokane.com. And we'd love to hear from you to discuss if Rotary might be a good fit for you. And now, with that, we have a little bit of business to take care of. So past president Stephanie Page is going to talk to us about the nominating committee.
It's good to be back up here. I haven't been up in a while. Thanks for having me. I'm Stephanie. Hello. As part of the immediate past president's duties, it's to chair the nominating committee. So here we are. For those Rotarians with less tenure, you might be wondering, what exactly is the nominating committee? And honestly, some Rotarians in the room with more tenure might be wondering the same thing. So let's just have a little refresher. Every year, the nominating committee is formed with the sole purpose of nominating future leaders into our club. In a given year, we either need to fill three or four directors' roles, those to serve on our Board of Directors, and also to identify our vice president for our upcoming Rotary year, which starts July 1st of the following year. Vice president is the first official step to president. As you serve as vice president first, then president-elect, then the most honorable, highly prestigious president. We have a strict criteria for how the nominating committee shall be formed. We also have a strict criteria for who's eligible for nomination. And of course, we have a formal process to follow. Today, I am formally announcing that the nominating committee has been formed. The nominating committee must be comprised of three past presidents, three Board of Directors, three committee chairs, and three Rotarians in good standing. You'll hear some of the names I'm going to say here in a moment. They might fit all of those criteria, but that's what we must have. Currently, we have on this year's committee: Tim Sweet, Georgia Oxford, A.T. Miller, Jack Reeves, Dave Clyer, Maggie Crawford, Clark Recky, Mike Church, Debbie Rowan, Deb Harper, Rod Price, Kyle Weir, President Julie Kelsey, and myself as immediate past president. Through October 30th, the committee will be accepting nominees. It is a high honor and privilege to be nominated into a leadership role in our club. It is truly exemplary service above self for those willing to accept the call to service. You'll receive an email shortly with Rotarians who are qualified for nomination. Please give it some thought. Look over the names, and then let the Rotary office know if a name or two stand out to you. The nominating committee will then contact the nominee to confirm their willingness to serve, and then determine the slate of officers and directors. We will present that to the membership. Stay tuned for that presentation, which will happen mid-November. And then finally, we will vote to ratify that slate on our annual meeting December 4th. Okay, who's ready for a pop quiz? Don't worry, we're not going to have one. But that is essentially your Rotary Minute on the nominating committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. And for everyone who stepped up to be a leader, and there's more out there in the room. So without further ado, Mike Church, will you please introduce our program? And he will be emceeing the debate today. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon and welcome to today's debate. Rotary Club 21 has a decades-long tradition of hosting political debates between candidate-seeking public office. This has been done as a community service to help citizens make informed voting choices. Our debate today is with the candidates for Spokane City Council District 3, Zach Zappone and Chris Savage. Thank you both for participating today. So pursuant to the ancient writings of Rotary International, we have a lot of policies and procedures. And our bylaws require that I share them with you. So if you're a fan of lots of policy and lots of procedure, then you've come to the right debate. So for policies, the candidates have signed a debate guidelines agreement outlining the code of conduct, and they've agreed to follow our debate policies and procedures. Reuse of any portion of footage or images from this debate is strictly prohibited without the written consent of Rotary Club 21. Use of cameras and recording devices are not allowed during the debate other than by our authorized media outlets. Applause or outward expressions of agreement or disagreement are not allowed during the debate. We ask that all Rotary members, guests, and campaigns avoid negative social media during and after the debate. So what happens if there's a policy violation? Well, we're in block. We have our own judge, district court judge Andrew Viviano in the room. Andrew, stand up, please. So Andrew has his gavel ready and is engaged to proceed in contempt of Rotary proceedings if the need arises. Thank you, Judge Viviano. And we have procedures. Debate questions are from Rotary 21 members, screened by the debate committee and selected by the moderator. The questions have not been provided to the candidates in advance. Prior to the debate, a coin flip with our 1911 original coin was flipped by John Driscoll. And the following order will be for opening statements and closing statements. Chris will go first. Zach will go second. Each candidate will be given one and a half minutes for opening statements. The same will be for closing statements. Following the opening, we will begin with debate questions, alternating who responds first to each question. The responder gets 1.5 minutes. The rebuttal is 45 seconds. Our timekeeper, and this just may be the most important role today, is John Driscoll. John, would you stand up and receive a round of applause?
Just 30 seconds and shut up.
Right, 30 seconds and then shut up. I had something different written down, but that'll speed up the process for sure. Each candidate has a one-minute wildcard to use at any time by notifying the moderator at the end of any segment. It may be used to clarify an issue or a position or extend your closing statement. Each candidate has also provided me with a secret question, which I will ask at some point during the debate. The wildcard is the only opportunity to extend. So asking me for additional time will not work. We will straighten to the judge and commence contempt proceedings if that occurs. If you don't answer the question, I reserve the right to push for an actually direct answer. So before we begin, and as we invite both candidates up, this is your last chance to make some noise. So please put your hands together and welcome both of our candidates as they join me on stage. Chris, you are up first for opening statements.
All right. That'll make it easier. Thank you all for being here this evening or this afternoon. It kind of feels like evening with how campaigns have been going. But thank you all for being here. I really appreciate you having the opportunity for us to speak in front of you to make sure that you know what our policies are and what your concerns are for this community. My name is Christopher Savage. I'm running for Spokane City Council District 3. And I can tell you about my elected experience. I can tell you about my professional experience. But what I'll just jump into is why I'm running for city council. I'm running for city council because I'm tired of our city go from bad to worse. You can just see outside, and I passed the rid path just earlier today, about how we really need to make sure we have a vibrant, clean city that all people have access to. We need to make sure that we're having competent policies that are coming out of City Hall that are going to be fiscally responsible and are going to make sure that we are addressing these problems in the right manner. We need a better representation up there right now because we need to make sure that we're going to try to... We have a $13 million deficit that is affecting the city right now. And we really need to get a handle on that. So that's why being fiscally responsible and making sure we have good policies coming out of City Hall is going to not only help our city, but save you all money.
All right, Zach, you're up next.
All right. I think this will work, maybe? Can you hear me fine? All right. Well, thank you for being here today. My name's Zach Zappone, and I'm running for reelection to city council because of one simple belief that I have, and that's that everyone in our community deserves a fair shot. I grew up here, born and raised, and went to North Central High School, the same school that my grandpa graduated from, the same school I teach at today. And like many people growing up here, I wanted to explore the world. So I went to college on the East Coast and received an elite education and saw the massive inequalities in our society. I was the only person from Spokane at my college, while my roommate was one of 22 boys from an all-boys private school from New Jersey. So I saw education as a pathway to opportunity, and I moved back to Eastern Washington, the tri-cities, to become a teacher. There, I taught at a school with 90% free and reduced lunch and worked to give students opportunities, created after-school programs, and took them to Washington DC and New York. But no matter how hard they tried, they struggled to get ahead. They struggled by getting hit crossing the street, unsafe crosswalks. Mental health, I had a student die by suicide. And so I decided that I needed to do more for our community. I got my master's degree in public policy and moved back to Spokane at the height of the pandemic to work on these issues. As a city council member, I've been fighting for working in middle-class families and have been delivering results around public safety, safer streets, and safer neighborhoods, and also investing in affordability. I'm excited. I'm sure we'll get the opportunity to talk about those issues. But I delivered results, worked across the aisle to be pragmatic in working for working, middle-class families. And that's why I'm running again because I believe that we should have that opportunity for everyone to move our community forward and not backwards. Thanks.
All right, thank you both. Chris, first question is to you. Most campaigns have strategic advisors who help shape policy positions, raise money, and support constituent outreach. During this campaign season, who are the three most significant people you turn to for help, support, and advice?
Well, it's most likely my team, my local consultant, my campaign manager. I have advice from them all really heavily. That's one of the main reasons why this campaign has been so much different. I ran three times beforehand, and that's one thing that I did wrong with is that I tried to do it all on my own. Having a team with you and behind you is essential in trying to address any concern that anyone has. So that's what's a little bit different about that. But another part of it is my family. My mother and my brother are one of the pillars of my... Just my family and my personal life. They're there when I need to talk to them. They're there when I need to kind of just dents about what's going on with the campaign, and they always listen. And that's what I've learned from them, as well as I need to listen to you all. So those are the top three people that I rely on because they really help out with the campaign.
All right, Zach, your response?
Yeah, it depends on the issue, where I turn to experts and look at it. But I think the core, people that I talk to and look for advice and help and support and just kind of a core is... Also, my family, my mom, has been the core and is actually very disengaged with politics. And I think it helps remember what is important to people in our community. Also, my students in the classrooms and the challenges that they see. I look to them for what are the concrete issues in our community? And then coworkers, such as a co-teacher, who was my mentor when I was a student in school and who continues to be a mentor to me in talking about the issues impacting everyday people, from getting their collar stolen to struggling to afford computers for our schools and our students. These are the people that I turn to to say, how can we keep working for our families and making sure that everyone has an opportunity to get ahead?
Zach, the next question is to you. In an article titled "20 Questions From Range Media's Aaron Sellers", you were both asked, what is the biggest issue facing your district? Both of your answers at the time were affordable housing. What's your specific plan to address this problem?
Yeah, affordability in general is a struggle. When I came in office, we didn't have the struggles of inflation that we have now. And the number-one cost in people's lives is housing. When I came to office, housing prices were escalating at an extraordinary rate. People were getting outbid in housing. Rents were escalating. Today, rents have stabilized, and so has housing prices. And so what we've done at the city is we've moved the city forward with addressing and removing barriers to building housing. We've changed our zoning laws to make it easier to build housing everywhere across the city. We've changed parking regulation to make it easier to build more housing. We've invested direct subsidies to build affordable housing lots. The next steps that I want to work on is changing our tax system to incentivize the underdevelopment of our vacant lots that we have all across our city, from downtown, up and down division, to our neighborhoods. We have vacant lots in our cities that outside speculators are working on, are holding on to. And so those are the policies that I want to work on, to shift the tax burden from working-class families and put it on those out-of-town speculators and make them redevelop those properties to be housing units. Unfortunately, my opponent wants to move backwards on a lot of these reforms that created the situation that we had in the first place. He wants to expand the urban growth boundary, increase congestion, and get rid of multifamily housing that we had to see being successful, duplexes, triplexes, apartments. We need a variety of housing to address our needs for our entire community, not just single-family houses. That's how we got into the housing crisis in the first place, and I don't want to move backwards. I want to move us forward as a community.
Chris, your response?
So yes, he is correct. I want to make sure that we actually have more housing around Spokane. And we can do that by working with our Growth Management Act and the comprehensive plan that is put on us by the city. We can make sure that we have 10 areas around Spokane that we can start developing so that we can actually approach this from a free-market model. I want to make sure that we are satisfying demand by having enough inventory in our city. We need to make sure that we also have housing choices and options for everyone because not everyone wants to live in an apartment. People want to come here. They're raising their families. And with people who are raising families, the number-one concern and one priority for them is they want the American dream, meaning a white picket fence, a yard, and a modest house that they can actually raise their family because you need space to raise a family.
Chris, next question is to you. In that same article by Range Media, you were both also asked the question, what is the biggest issue facing downtown Spokane right now? Zach responded that it was homelessness. You responded, safety. What's your specific plan to address safety?
So what we need to do is we need to follow the will of the people, and we need to make sure that we are actually going into law, which was Prop 1, which was voted by 74% of the people back in 2023. We need to make sure that we are making competent laws that are making sure that we have the enforcement capabilities to make sure that our downtown is safe, vibrant, and clean. What happened about a couple of months ago that my opponent did was he watered down the Prop 1 ordinance to make sure that he made the home ordinance, which, if you see what happened on the June 16th meeting, the first vote was for a seven-day camping pass. And that was actually voted down. Betsy Wilkerson made sure that she voted against that, and it was kind of put down. Well, when you see a little bit later, we see that there was a motion to reconsider, which I have never seen before in the six years I've been going down to City Hall. And you can see that my opponent was actually... He was actually coaching Lily Navarrete to make sure that she was doing it. And that begs the question, why wouldn't he do it? So what we need to do is we need to make sure we have proper enforcement, and we need to make sure that we're putting Prop 1, that was the will of people, back on the books because there was nothing wrong with that. It was just the process that it went about with. The rule is totally fine. That's what our Supreme Court said about it. So all the city council had to do. And what we need to do is vote that into law so we have enforcement capabilities that will protect our children and our future generations because there's a lot of people that are now seeing that we don't have that capability downtown, and it's affecting our youth, and it's affecting our kids. And those are the future of Spokane that we really need to make sure that we are focusing on.
Zach, your response?
Yeah, I think most of us know that Prop 1 was on the books for two years, and it wasn't working. Our problems weren't solved. And so Prop 1 doesn't solve downtown because it's within 1,000 feet of schools, parks, and playgrounds. That's not a large part of downtown. We need something that is city-wide and works for everyone. As a council member, we've been investing in drug treatment programs, opioid response teams that directly impact people and get them out of the streets. At that time, I voted. I said that we're not going to see change without facilities for people to go. We need a daytime navigation center that just opened this month for people to go during the day. And we needed a balanced approach to do the enforcement, to get people to the resources they need. That camping ban that we passed has no date restrictions at all. People can get cited immediately. We need to strengthen that so that people can get those citations, get connected to community court and other resources, and to have that kind of connection to pathway and get those resources connected to people.
Wildcard? John, the wildcard's been requested.
All right. So I'm glad my opponent brought that up because right now, our navigation center is not working. We need to make sure that it is actually making competent policies that are coming out of City Hall so we're actually helping these individuals because when these navigation centers aren't open and properly used, there's a lot of confusion out there. I've talked to several homeless providers as well as homeless advocacy people that are taking people to that navigation center, and it just not is doing what it's supposed to. It's not diverting them to the right shelter. It's not getting them to the right services. We need to make sure that we are using the finite amount of money that the city has in the right measure so we're helping the right amount of people. And that is going to be very difficult. We're going to have to find creative ways in the future because, again, we are in a $13 million deficit that my opponent has led us into. We need to make sure that we are going to save you all money and making sure that we are actually making competent policies that are going to protect you all and also going to protect our city.
Zach, what is the first concrete policy you want to see implemented if you are re-elected as representative of Spokane's third district? And what is your primary goal over the next four years if you are elected?
Yeah, to address the daytime navigation center. It wasn't working. That's why it's readjusted, and it's been a new model operated under Day 2 today. And so we're making adjustments and learning from practices to make it better. And I support the mayor and the administration as they're implementing that better. One of the first policies that I think is a quick policy that we can do within the first month or two of office is ban algorithmic price fixing for renters. And so, or for landlords. So we're seeing an increased escalation of these big data companies that are taking advantage of monopolizing markets to set price fixing the market for renters. And so I would like to pass that policy and make sure that we don't have that entering our market here in Spokane to provide those protections for our renters. That addresses the affordability so that we don't see these increasing costs. And when we talk to mom and dad, landlord, they don't use these things anyways. It's the big businesses that are preying on our markets. And so that's some things that we don't need in our community. We want to make sure that we're supporting our local businesses, our local communities, and make sure so that people stay housed in the first place because the number-one thing that leads to homelessness is unaffordability of housing. And then with that becomes co-occurring addiction treatment stuff. After that, I would like to start working on enforcing our non-enforcing, but co-deploying our resources to get people into treatment. And we're working with the task force that was announced this week on new facilities in our community about where people can go when they're in crisis and trying to get people connected to those resources.
Chris, your response?
Can you repeat it again, the question?
Absolutely. So the question was, what is the first concrete policy you want to see implemented if you are elected? And what is your primary goal over the next four years?
So one of the policy things that I want to do when getting into City Hall is the first thing I'm looking into is changing our contract service providers for our shelter system here. Our scattered sites model is not working, and we can clearly see that across the neighborhood. When I'm doorbelling all the doors in my district, I'm hearing constant complaints about where these shelters are and how they're being activated. We have plenty of people that are making sure that it is not being livable in our neighborhood because they're having those shelters there. So we need to make sure that we're not warehousing people and we're actually helping them. And that's why it's interesting to think that with the homeless scattered shelter model that we have right now, with the homeless scattered shelter model that we have right now, we actually only have 180 beds to 200 beds available, and we are actually providing less beds available than the current, the earlier track shelter, which actually had 360 beds available. I don't know how much, how we're helping more homeless with less beds in our city, so we need to make sure we are actively giving money and funds to the right nonprofits that are helping out.
Next question is for you, Chris. City Council is a nonpartisan position, presumably because voters want to keep our city government from experiencing the gridlock seen at the congressional level. Yet, it appears that the council often separates into factions. What reassurance can you give voters that you will listen to all constituents, make meaningful efforts to work with all stakeholders, and also work in a conciliatory way with all council members?
So, what my, what you're gonna get with my candidacy is that I'm not a quitter, and I'm going to make sure that I'm going to listen to people who even have the opposing viewpoints than me. I will make sure that it doesn't matter if I'm blue in the face, or whether you're talking to me, that I'm going to be there available for you, because you need an accessible city council member that is listening to you. I will not be on my laptop, I will not be on my phone up on the dais, I'll be making sure that when there's testimony given, I'm listening to you all. And that's what's going to make sure that we actually are reaching across the aisle and working with another. I'm going to be persistent with my colleagues on the dais, to make sure that we are working together to make sure that we are fixing Spokane in the right manner, because I know that I can't do it by myself. We have to be cooperating with one another and collaborating to make sure that we are actually helping our citizens. Because even though I may disagree with some of our city council members, I can see in every one of their eyes, that they, they love the city just as much as I do, and they're trying to help out as what they can. So, we need to come together, find compromise, and make sure that we're working together for citizens, and not trying to make sure that our own egos are getting bruised, and that's what you're getting with me.
Zach, your response?
Yeah, that sounds good, but unfortunately, when my opponent had a comment in the paper, at a forum, they said troubling about my life as a, as a gay person in our community, I called him, and he texted me back saying, "I'm busy running on the campaign trail, and I don't have time to talk to you. I'll see you on the campaign trail." So, this is the only time I'm able to talk to him. I, as your council member, meet with everyone across the aisle, and take the time to talk to people who I disagree with, take the time to listen to them. We have convened meetings of people from stakeholders and roundtable discussions, and had over 150 people across the community to talk about homelessness. When it came to Israel and Palestine, we had our community members, 25 members from the Israel and the Muslim communities, or Jewish and Muslim communities, come together and have those dialogues over the course of, of roundtable discussions. And I will show up and continue to meet with everybody, and work together to be that person I can communicate.
Zach, campaigns are often focused on what's wrong with the city, and what you'll do if elected to fix it. Name three things that you think are going well in the city of Spokane, and what you will do to build upon them, or improve.
Yeah. I think that there's a lot of great things happening in our community, and it really comes down to the people, a lot of you in our community who are doing that work. Spokane is a vibrant place. People want to come and come to our community. We have a thriving restaurant scene, event scene, community events. I've supported and helped fund those things. Events like tacos and tequila, and Lunar New Year, are new events in our community that draw thousands of people into our community. That was started with American Rescue Plan funding, that I funded and helped invest in our community. Another thing that's going great is that we are investing in our neighborhoods with better transportation, and walkable neighborhoods, and crosswalks. We have a plan of 27 miles of interconnected bike and pedestrian network across the entire city, to implement that by 2027. And so, we have a vision about how we can create this vibrant community, and people can walk and bike and get to neighborhoods in our, in our business districts. Another thing that is going great is that we have really great art scene and neighborhood council districts, sorry, business districts. And I've invested in both of those through our American Rescue Plan funds, to build this network of interconnectedness, multi-ethnicity, a vibrant scene for everyone in our community to be able to get ahead, get connected to their community, investing, go to the Garland Theater, bike back home, and go to a street festival. And so, these are the things that people like about our community. We have great outdoor resources, and the investments that we've made to protect our river have been historic, and we need to keep moving our city forward in that direction to have a bright and future.
Chris, your response?
So, the three top things that I think that is beautiful about the city is the people in our community. I see them almost every day with what they're trying to do, and how they love the city as much as I do. I also love our parks. That is one of the main reasons why my parents actually brought me up here to Spokane, is they saw the parks here, and they were just like, "We gotta do this," because they are so beautiful, and I love, I loved playing them when I was a little kid. Also, another part that may be a little bit odd, but I love the architecture downtown. We have such a vibrant difference of architecture styles downtown. One which I love myself is Art Deco, which is actually, which is applied to City Hall. But those are the top three things that I think that are the best things about Spokane, that we can really actually reinforce, and make sure that we're actually doing.
Chris, how would you describe your financial supporters? Are they primarily individuals, or large corporate donors, a mix of the both? And what are up to three key endorsements that you want to highlight for voters?
Yes, so, a lot of my contributors right now, you can actually look on my PDC, is mostly individuals. Yes, there are some wealthy individuals in there, but you can see that there is a wealth and a ground spring well of people who want to support me, that they want to change here in Spokane. There is many people that you can see on my PDC reports that are giving from as low as $50 to up to the contribution amount. I am honored to have each and one of their support, because these are true blue citizens of Spokane, that want to make sure that Spokane is changing in the right way. And a couple of my endorsements that I am really proud of, the first one is Steve Corker. He actually is one of the main reasons why I'm still running for city council. Back in 2021, he sat with me for about an hour and a half at the Tomato Street, and we just talked about his own journey through his own way of saying, "Don't quit. Make sure that you're still being persistent and resilient, because this is what Spokane needs." And it was something that he did himself. So, I am very proud to have his support, to have his mentorship, and to have his guidance. He's a great person that I think Spokane is lucky to have. Another thing that I endorse, that I'm proud to have, is also Jonathan Bingle and Michael Cathcart. This shows that we are going to have a lockstep approach when we get up there, to make sure that we are fixing the city as fast as possible, and I'll be making sure that I'm working with them. One last one that I am very proud of is my multi, or my multi-endorsements from across the region, from either the Spokane Valley, all the way out to Liberty Lake with city council members. This shows that there's going to be a regional collaboration that I will promote, and make sure that we will focus on, so that we are actually saving our taxpayers' money, instead of what's going on right now, where we're actually leaving Shrek, we've lost the Regional Homelessness Collaborative, and we're actually doing mob tactics on trying to ask for money from our wastewater treatment facility out in the Spokane Valley.
Zach, your response?
Yeah, so my opponent didn't tell you is that there's outside money involved in the race, just like there is every year. And it's called the Spokane Good Government Alliance, and there's two mega donors that donated $75,000 and $100,000 to influence our elections here locally. That's Larry Stone and Alvin Wolf. These types of developers are expecting returns on our community. I've been standing up for working and middle-class families. I'm proud to be supported by workers such as firefighters, teachers, nurses, healthcare workers, grocery workers, bus drivers. These are the type of people that I fight for every day, and then will continue to fight for. Those are specifically the Firefighters Union, the Teachers Union, SEU 1199, SEU 775, long-term care workers, and UFCW, our grocery store workers. So, I will continue to fight for them. Instead of focusing on the special interests who can spend $100,000 in the race, my donors, over 400 donors, are the people that are fighting every day to keep moving our city forward.
Zach, what's your favorite local business?
Yep. My favorite local business is the Garland Theater. I think the history is, I'm a social studies teacher, and I teach history, and I think that there's incredible traditions that we've had there. It's a community landmark, it centers our neighborhoods, and it provides a great resource to a lot of people. I remember growing up at the, attending the Garland Theater as a child, and going to the free movies. And that's what I do with my kids today. I have a 4th grader and a 2nd grader, and we like to go there on the weekends, or during the summer, and, and go and watch a movie. And it's been a great cornerstone of our community. We try to bike there a lot of times, but sometimes the crossings are too dangerous for the little ones. So, those are the types of things that I want to invest in our community, to make sure that we grow our neighborhood business districts, our local community members, and make sure that they're able to get ahead. A lot of times, a lot of outside developers are, are not investing in our neighborhoods, and they're holding on to those speculations. And so, I want to keep growing our community, making our neighborhoods thriving neighborhoods. We've invested over $2.5 million in our neighborhood business districts. That's for Garland, Perry, Hilliard, and North Monroe Business District. And so, they all have their great bones, and it's time that we move them forward in investing in our community. Thank you.
Chris, your response?
My favorite store to go to is someone, is a grocery store that's actually close to me up on any trail. It's a Yolks Family Market. I love going there, because not only do they have good products and good prices for what you need to get, but all the people that work there, all the people that patronize that business, I always love to talk to and see how, what's going on in their life. This is where I've been able to learn more about what the issues have here in Spokane, because they come up and they talk to you, and you actually get real feedback on what the real concerns of the city are. Because right now, there's a lack of representation up on city council, where their voices aren't being heard. That's why the town hall over just this week was very poorly attended for our district, and that was very disappointing. We are seeing that people aren't trying to speak up anymore, because they feel that their voices aren't heard. And that's what we're going to change when I'm up on city councils. There's going to be a resilience, and there's going to be a brought back of the people's voice up there.
The topic for the next question is the arts in Spokane. Chris, what would you do to strengthen opportunities for workers in the creative sector?
Well, it's going to be very difficult to try to do this right now, because again, we are in a $13 million deficit. We are going through the budget right now, and make sure that we are making the right decisions, so that we can have money for people like this in the future. And what we have to do is going to be very difficult, because 90% of our general fund costs are personal salaries. So, we need to make sure that we're going through them, which I have, I identified about 20 full-time workers that we can actually cut, to make sure that we are saving around $200, $2 million to $3 million that we can either put into these art programs, if necessary, or divert them into actually making sure we're not losing services. Because with the $13 million deficit we're in, we're looking to cut services like gas, garbage, and other utilities that are not going to be good. So, we need to make sure that we are actually making sure that we are having these policies that aren't going to waste the taxpayers' money. And yes, I would love to see if we had more arts here, but for the time being, we aren't going to have that priority, because unfortunately, we are just not seeing the money come in.
Chris, in your answer, I think you had said that you had identified 20 positions that would be cut. Are you prepared to identify what those are?
Yes, so I can give a couple of them right now. One is our parliamentarian on city council. I think we know, all know that we just need to do Robert's Rules of Orders, and have some classes on that, to make sure that we're able to run our meetings correctly. Another one is our communications director. Those, the two ones that I just said are about $100,000 plus benefits. And yes, they are a small amount that we can see, but we can actually apply this, for instance, to making sure that these fundings go towards like our community centers, like West Central Community Center, Corbin Senior Center, or Cento Senior Center. So, we can make sure that they have the active funding readily available, so they can provide for the programs, like the WIT program and other youth programs.
And Zach, I'll give you an additional 30 seconds on your response on the arts question.
All right, is it budget or arts first? I bet you'll have more budget questions.
Why don't you, why don't you respond to both issues, arts and then budget, if you want to?
All right. I'm really quick on the budget. Those were two positions that were identified, not 20. We need some massive conversations that we're having as a community to address it. Those two positions are not going to get us there. And we are having those hard conversations at city council, and we're going to need to have those hard conversations as a community. On the arts, I've been really proud to be a supporter of creating a vibrant economy in our community. It's super important that we know that the creative economy creates jobs that are reinvested in our community, it draws tourism, and it creates a sense of belonging for our communities. I've been proud to support the Asphalt Art Program that Spokane Arts does. We've funded Terrain up to $100,000 to build their new center downtown, that they're doing a capital campaign for. And we've also are maintaining the funding for the ticket sales, to make sure that we're funding our arts on every ticket that's sold in our community.
The topic for the next question is climate and environment. Zach, what should the city be doing to address climate change, and do you support the city's climate planning efforts?
Yeah. I think we all were really concerned when we saw the river run dry for the first time. The river is a part of our identity as a community. It's a symbol of, that's been here since time immemorial. And it's also important to our ecological system. And so, what we learned since the river ran dry is that there's some major issues around snowpack, and the greater impact that climate change is going to have in our community. The number one thing that we can do as a community at the city council is to work on our land use, our development, and our transit. Those are the things that are the major drivers of climate change, in continuing greenhouse gas emissions through exhaust. And so, and our building codes. And so, since I've been on city council, we've created more zoning options to focus on infill development. I've invested and supported expanding transit access. We have expanded transit access to youth who ride free. We just passed a low-income bus fare program, an opportunity fair, to get more people to ride the bus more often. These are the types of investments we need in our community. My opponent, again, wants to move us backwards and have more sprawl, more annexation, more single-family homes, more use of our law, of irrigating lawns that draws from the river and depletes our resources. And those are the things that I've been on council. I've supported our Sustainable Action Plan, and have delivered results for our community. My opponent doesn't have solutions on these things. Thanks.
Chris, your response?
So, we're just at the city of Spokane right now. All we're doing with our sustainability and our eco-friendly kind of policies is all just lip service. It does nothing that we are trying to actually help out with conservation. Like, for instance, our water ordinance that was put on a couple of years ago, there is no enforcement capability, and honestly, it does not make sense that we are restricting our water usage when we all draw from the same water source, which is the Spokane Rathribb Periographer. We need to make sure that we are talking with other municipalities, making regional cooperations with them, and partnering with them, so that not one person is conserving water, and another one is over-drawing it. We need to make sure that we're making competent policies that are going to work for our people and not against them. And when you see that there's an exemption for the city, where they can actually water during the day, but citizens can't, that seems pretty egregious to me, where the city says, "Rules for thee, but not for me."
Chris, do you support the sale of city water outside its designated water service area?
Yes, because as being a Water Conservancy Commissioner, a former one on the Spokane Water Conservancy Commission, I realize and got to be educated that the city of Spokane has enough water rights to actually give out enough water. And what that means is that we actually go through the Water Washing Department of Ecology, make sure that we aren't over-drawing our water, because they know that we have a finite amount of it, and they actually over-watch and authorize what's going on. So, if we do have the capabilities, yes, because for instance, we annexed some water and got them up to airway heights, trying to help them out when they had their contamination of their water sources. So, when it becomes down to that, yes, I would help out our neighbors, because we have to be good neighbors when it comes to these kind of questions.
Zach, your response?
Yeah. I think it's really important that you all know that on the park side, we have water infrastructure that, our irrigation system's over 100 years old, and is manually operated. So, this year, we have the opportunity to update those systems with the park's levy. And so, I encourage you to look into that, because that's the type of things where the city can be a leader in fixing that. My opponent has talked about, has desired to annex more land and expand our area. That expands our water use. We have to pay for that as rate pairs. That means we have to pay for more pump stations, more water towers, more sewer lines. All of those costs get passed on, on to each and every one of you who pays a water bill. So, I'm in favor of infill development, making sure that we're building up, turning our vacant lots into vibrant communities, because we have a lot of space that we need to do that, and focus that inward first, before we do this expanding and congestion, and increasing costs for everyone in our community.
I'm going to follow up with you on that last comment, Zach. 30 seconds, Mr. Timer. So, you said, turning vacant lots into productive land use. Do you have a specific plan to do that?
Yep. We've been working, Councilmember Kletzke and I have been working with state lawmakers, a bipartisan coalition, to propose state legislation. It's often talked about as a land value tax, or a universal tax exemption, that would basically separate the tax value from the building on top, from the property. Because right now, if you make that investment in your property on top of the lot, you get taxed more, and the lots paid, or taxed less. So, this would say, what is the value of that lot? When we look at places like the parking lot across from the Redwagon, that is prime real estate in our city, that should be turned into bigger and better housing, or even parking garages. And so, that's what that type of legislation would do.
Chris, you have 30 seconds to respond.
So, we need to make sure that we are doing this in the correct manner. A lot of the parking lots downtown are owned by Geiger or other certain parking services, so it's not just as easy as kind of snapping your fingers, and this is the silver bullet. Also, with the location that he put there, there was actually some consternation a couple of years ago, about whether there'd be a shadow that would be putting over Riverfront Park. So, we need to make sure that we are talking to our citizens, and making sure that we are putting these things in the right places that they would like. Because this needs to be a comprehensive, multifaceted plan, that we're working with the people and not against them. We want to make sure that people want to live here in Spokane, and want to stay here in Spokane.
Moving into the subject area of homelessness and crime. Zach, do you personally feel safe when you go downtown? What do you think we need to do to address the homeless issue downtown?
Yeah, I think downtown is definitely a struggle. I hear impacts from people every day that are worried for their, their families, for themselves. And I think it's important to recognize that. I recognize that I'm an able-bodied man, and that doesn't represent the experience of everyone in our community. But I bring my family downtown, we go to the Riverfront Park, we go to restaurants, we go to plays. We spend a lot of time in our community. And so, I think it's important that we recognize that that's not the experience for everyone. And we address a lot of those concerns. And so, as we talked about earlier, a lot of the things that we see are conflated between open drug use, and homelessness and street sweeping. And so, we need to have a comprehensive plan, which is supported in Home Starts Here, that stands for healthcare, outreach, multidisciplinary engagement, and economic security. Also, while I've been on council, I voted to ban open drug use in our city. So, we have a lot of the policies in place to do a comprehensive view of trying to get people off the street. The next steps I've been working on and talking about is how to make sure that we get them implemented. We have a lot of policies in place, but we have a lot of barriers to implementation, such as facilities. Right now, we have a lack of mental health beds for people to go to. The jail's at capacity on what's called red light status, which means that people are getting turned away every day at the jail. And so, whether we ban camping, ban drug, open drug use, there are not places for people to go. We need to get resources to people, and connect them to them. That's why I'm a big supporter of community court. I think jail's an option of last resort. We should be helping people first, and getting them the resources, connecting them to the community court, and following up and getting them with caseworkers and into treatment.
So, is your answer yes, I feel safe?
The answer is, I personally feel safe, but I recognize that a lot of people don't.
All right, Chris, your response?
I personally feel safe downtown, but I keep my head on a swivel because of how dangerous it is. So, I wouldn't ask that of my fam, of my family, or any families coming downtown. And it's interesting that my opponent brings up the red light status, because I just talked with the detention services today, and they actually have over 100 beds available. So, we can actually help out with this right now. And also, we need to make sure that we are, again, enforcing Proposition 1. We need to make sure that we have the enforcement capabilities, and make sure that downtown is safe, welcoming, and open for people who want to come down there. That's why we're seeing a 32% vacancy rate downtown right now, that's leading to our $13 million deficit. People don't want to come downtown, because whether it's perception or reality, they see it as unsafe. And that is what I hear on the doors constantly, is one of their top concerns, whether you go up to Five Mile, or you go down to West Central. This is one of their top concerns.
Chris, do business owners downtown contribute to creating, creating an environment that fosters crime in the downtown quarter? And I guess some examples that were given were owners of parking lots, owners of vacant buildings, et cetera?
No, I think that they are doing the best they can with what they've been giving. City Hall keeps putting and imposing ordinances on them, that are making it really hard for them to do their jobs of trying to maintain their buildings. Like, for instance, the recent property maintenance bill that was put out. Now, all the people have to do is just cite them with the City of Spokane Code Enforcement, and they send them a bill saying, "This is what you're doing." What you don't realize is that I've seen on several occasions where people have put away their trash, they put away everything on their property, to make sure that it is nice and representable for those. And then, the homeless will come around, go through and rummage in the garbage, and just throw everything everywhere. It should not be the property commercial owner's responsibility to field that kind of thing that's going on. That should be the city's responsibility, because they are feeding into what is going on, making homelessness worse here in Spokane, and it's contributing to that. So, we need to make sure that we are actually making good laws, that aren't putting the onus of responsibility on the wrong people. Our property commercial people downtown are doing the best they can with the bad situation, and that's what I constantly hear from the people that I talk to and that I interview with.
Zach, your response?
Yeah. I hear my opponent explain a lot of the frustrations that we have. I don't hear him offer a lot of solutions. One of the frustrations we hear, our vacant properties, like the Les Schwab Building, that is causing blight in our community, and property owners are neglecting that. Most property owners are doing a great job of taking care of their properties, and maintaining those standards. We passed an ordinance this year that targets those that are not taking care of their properties. Maybe they're out of town, or just absentee landlords. And so, those types of buildings that we see on Division, that are covered with plywood, the ordinance no longer allows us to have those types of things that attract nuisances in our community, overgrown weeds and stuff like that. So, we have basic property standards, because that's what I hear from folks, that we deserve to have those. Everyone has to maintain the same standards, and those who are getting away with it need to be held to the same standard too, not just those out-of-town rich developers.
I'll go, I'll both give you 30 seconds to talk about this. But, so, with regard to the business use Les Schwab, that is, I can't remember how long it's been, but it seems like years that it's been boarded up and closed. So, is, what's the plan to take care of those vacant businesses, vacant lots, so that we don't have the blight?
Yeah. Well, so, some of that has been the city code enforcement that has remediated of those properties, and they've used cart, or plywood and types of properties like that. So, the ordinance that we did does hold the city to a higher standard, to make sure that when we're remediating properties, that we're doing it in the way that makes it look cohesive to the neighborhood. So, I encourage you to call it code enforcement. We have a great code enforcement team. We've invested more in our code enforcement. Last year, we funded a whole, an additional cleanup team. And so, we know the hard work that they're, that they have there, but those are the types of things that we need to report, and make sure that we're holding to standard.
Chris, 30 seconds?
So, what we need to do is we, again, we can't vilify our commercial property owners and our landlords, that are most kind of people who own these properties. We need to make sure that we are working with them, because they are the experts on the ground that are seeing what's going on. We need to talk with them more, and make sure that they are actually having a voice up on city council, so we can actually address this in the right manner. Because right now, we are just going with our own thing. And again, it's the rules for thee, and not for me. For instance, with the property maintenance ordinance. For the property owners, they actually have to make sure that they are matching paint on wherever the graffiti is.
Zach, the city recently launched a Home Starts Here initiative, that creates a unified strategy for the city of Spokane to meaningfully address the complex factors that contribute to housing instability and homelessness. What is your view of this initiative, and is it proving effective in addressing crime, addiction, and related health and safety issues?
Yeah. When I was first in office, we didn't have a cohesive plan at the city on how to address homelessness. This policy I voted and supported for is a cohesive, comprehensive, all above strategy to address homelessness. H O M E stands for healthcare, outreach, navigation, multidisciplinary enforcement, and economic security. We need to do everything we can to address homelessness. Part of those ordinances, at the same time, we passed a Good Neighbor Agreement, that required shelter operators in neighborhoods to abide by certain standards. I've knocked on the doors of shelter operator, or neighbors across the street, and they said that these scattered shelters are working great in their neighborhood. And that's because they have Good Neighbor Agreements. We also passed an ordinance around obstruction and unlawful camping. And with that ordinance, we made it illegal to camp anywhere in the city at any time. Now, we have the barriers to implement that. I've been having conversations the last two weeks. I think we, we are hearing the challenges since the implementation of this. And at that time, I committed to reevaluating it. We passed the 90-day reevaluation, but it doesn't mean, mean that we need to wait 90 We passed the 90-day reevaluation, but it doesn't mean that we need to wait 90 days to reevaluate and how to make it better. So we're having conversations about how can we refine the ordinances and make them better and stronger, because I think the part that's lacking right now is the balanced approach with enforcement. The navigation center just opened today or yesterday. And so now we have a place for people to go. And so we're wanting to make sure that we get people connected and that the ordinances are in the right place that gives law enforcement the tool that they can use to engage with everyone on our streets, get them connected to services, and hold them accountable in the end.
Chris, your response?
I would say that the home ordinance is not working right now, because there's a lot of confusion between citizens as well as our police on how enforcement should be in there. People don't know if it's a three-day camping pass or if they need to have enforcement that's before the outreach team. So it is just not working. We need to make sure that we are enforcing the Prop 1 that was voted in by 74% of the voters. And what he's not telling you with the Good Neighbor Agreement is that with the shelters, that wasn't something that they did on their own kind heart. They actually were have to impose on that, because neighborhood councils got up in such a rile that they were having these shelters imposed into their neighborhoods without their consent. So that's why those Good Neighbor Agreements came about. It wasn't because it was from the goodness of their heart. It was because they were forced to.
The next question is to Chris, and both of you have touched on this issue, and this will give you a chance to expand on comments. And this is a long question, so it might sound like I'm reciting the policies and procedures again. And Judge Biggino, if I can ask for your grace not to hold me in contempt for any of the questions. But here it goes. In 2023, Spokane voters approved Proposition 1 by a margin of 75% to address issues of camping and strengthening enforcement laws prohibiting public drug use and obstruction in public spaces. Earlier this year, our state Supreme Court, as I previously mentioned, invalidated Prop 1, stating that it was an administrative act which could only be taken by the city and council, not by the voters. The city council then enacted a new ordinance to address these issues, adopting language that is significantly different than what was approved by the voters. If elected, would you act to restore the language that the 75% of Spokane voters approved through Prop 1? If you do not, do you support any changes to the council's current substitute, and what would those changes be?
Absolutely. We need to make sure that we are actually enumerating Prop 1 into law, so we actually have some enforcement capabilities that will make our downtown safe, clean, and vibrant. Right now, again, a lot of people that I'm doorbelling on up in, all the way up to Five Mile, as well as all the way down to West Central, do not want to come downtown anymore, because whether in its perception or reality, they are seeing it unsafe. And when they don't want to come downtown, they are not bringing their families, they're not bringing their activities, they're not bringing their revenue that we desperately need, because we're in a $13 million deficit. We need to make sure that we are following the voice of the people and the will of the people by doing exactly what they have voted into, especially from an overwhelming majority. So by not doing that, it was a spit into the base of the voters by doing their own thing and creating a home ordinance that created a several-day camping pass that is confusing not only our SPD, but also citizens who live around our parks.
Zach, your response?
Yeah, I think my opponent's confused, because there is no seven-day pass. We brought that up and amended it and didn't have any day requirement on when a citation can be cited. So for someone that attends every city council meeting, I would think that you would know what's in the ordinance. I did vote in support of Prop 1 to being reinstituted in our community. That was defeated by the rest of the council. And so we worked for a solution rather than being stuck and no progress. What's really important is that we have something that applies citywide. If we only have something that applies downtown, that's going to push the issues of downtown out into every neighborhood in our community, and it's already happening. There are more people that are camping on the streets, in parks, near Shadle and Indian Trail. And so these are places that we need to make sure that we apply citywide, and it's enforceable. The problems that we have that we need to move forward are how to connect people and get them off the street. We don't have facilities for where people go, and anyone that tells you otherwise is not telling the truth.
Zach, the Spokane Business Alliance has stated that Spokane has one of the highest overdose death rates in the nation. Do you agree with that assessment, regardless what steps would you take to address the crisis?
Yeah, drug overdose is a major issue in our community. As a teacher, I've had students in class experiencing overdose, and it's scary and frightening. I think it's really important to recognize that, from our coroner's office that we heard, that over half of all overdoses in our community are happening to people in their homes and they're sheltered, and it's not just happening to people on the street. And so the drug crisis is absolutely a major concern of mine and a major concern of a lot of people in our community. As a council member, we've taken action to address that, whether it's from the deployment of resources to addressing alcohol impact zones to limit the number or the use of drug paraphernalia and increase the use of Narcan. We've also funded a special prosecutor at the US Attorney's Office that is combating crime right now and going after drug dealers in our community. So this is something that is a concern in our community. I take it as a serious priority, and it's something that we've been working and delivering on. My next step that I've been looking into is how do we do a department that is a deployed department, a street response department, like fire police and street response, so we can help people where they're at. But that's not going to address the overall concern in our community for the half of people that aren't on our streets. And so we have education programs. We're in our schools educating people. We're also addressing the supply chain. And so this is an issue that needs a comprehensive view and not just a one single solution that will solve the problem.
Chris, your response?
So as my opponent stated earlier, he said that he's banned open drug use downtown. All we have to do is go out right now, and we can see that is not the truth. Again, this is just lip service to tell you that one thing and doing another. We need to make sure that we are actively having good policies as well as good facilities that are helping these individuals in the right manner. That's why we need to look into having a new correctional facility that will have more beds, as well as wraparound services that will address mental health, addiction, and have onsite job training, because those are the three most important things when a person is incarcerated that they need to make sure that they are having, because they need to make sure that they are getting their lives back in order and coming back into society so that we can actually have them contribute to our city and make sure that we are actually saving them and not killing them. That's why we're on track for a 500 to 600 deaths at the end of this year from fentanyl and opioid deaths.
I'll use my Bible card. If you look at the facts instead of things that are talking points, the coroner reported to all the government officials recently at the fairgrounds that we're seeing a plateau in drug deaths in our community, and we're not on track to this escalating number that is being used. Those are fear-mongering tactics. There are real challenges, and we need to address those real challenges. And like I talked about earlier, just banning something doesn't make it something that just goes away. We don't have the resources and the facilities to do that. We have opioid settlement dollars that we've been reinvesting in education on street deployment, and I want to strengthen those and make it stronger. And we need the facilities for people to get help and where they need it. I know I toured a psychiatric ward recently, and they said that people are getting discharged from jail to the hospitals, because the jails don't have the capacity to help them. So we need a full effort on that. And I'm really nervous that the federal cuts to Medicaid are going to make our drug problem even worse in our community. And so I stand up for that to make sure that we're moving in the right direction, instead of letting the federal government take away healthcare from people in our community.
Chris, in November, voters will be asked whether they support Together Spokane, which includes a $200 million school bond and a $240 million parks levy. These two measures would fund projects that would enhance schools, parks, and neighborhoods across Spokane. Do you support these two measures? And if they don't pass, what's the alternative?
Well, one of the things that I need to say is that on the doors, this is not one of the big concerns, that even though I ask people, they're more concerned about public safety downtown, the homelessness crisis across our city, and affordability. But just going into that a little bit more is that I personally would not be voting for them, because the school bonds, as I've been hearing on the doors, people are still very upset from the advisory vote that was done at the Joe Albee Stadium. I'm surprised that is actually sticking around, but a lot of people are saying they don't want to do any more school bonds, because if their voice isn't heard from what they did with the vote, then why would they want to approve anything else for the schools in the future? So we're going to have to deal with that if they really want to make sure that those bonds go through by making actual connections with the community and respecting the voice of the people when they say, hey, we want this here. For the levies, I'm a sucker for parks. I love parks. That's why my parents brought me up here. But I have a huge problem with it being a 20-year levy. I know that we have a streets levy that was able to do that in 2015, but that's a whole different thing, where it's actually providing infrastructure that a lot of people use. And for right now, we need to make sure that if it was even a 10-year levy, that would actually be a lot more digestible, because when we have a 20-year one, I don't think it's responsible or respectful to constrain future constituents and future people of Spokane to a vote and/or a property tax that they had no say in. So that's why we need to make sure that this levy should be a little bit lesser. I would go for 10 years. I would actually say yes for that, but for the other part, I wouldn't. They're going to provide a lot of good things, but right now, there's a lot of people in my district that just can't afford it right now, and that's why they're going to be voting no as well.
Zach, your response?
Yeah, it's unfortunate to hear that my opponent is holding on to all the grudges instead of moving our city forward and investing in our community. I'm very supportive of both of these measures. As someone that teaches in a building that is 45 years old, I see the struggles that we have and the challenges that our students are experiencing every day. This investment is a historic investment in both our parks and our schools, and it creates more efficient use of our tax dollars and resources. We get over 200 projects across our city in every single neighborhood, every single school. It brings in more park rangers that addresses the safety concerns that we are having. It improves our bathrooms. It improves swimming lessons for kids. It creates a trade school program. These are the investments that help our kids grow better, instead of holding on to our grudges that's not going to let our future generations grow. And so I think it's critical that we invest in these improvements. And for the average homeowner, we're talking about $8 a month, and the bond is only 2 cents of the total amount. It's very little on the bond.
The subject of the next question is immigration. Zach, what role should the city have, if any, in dealing with immigration issues in Spokane? And should the city pass laws that limit immigration arrests on the city property?
Yeah, like many people here, I've been extremely concerned and frightened for a lot of our community members who are being illegally detained by the federal government. And we've seen that from students in our schools. Ferris High School student has been taken. Our employees at our jobs at Walmart that are being taken out of our communities, and they're here legally. They have legal residency. And so this is something that should concern everyone in our community, not just the immigrant community. And so as a city council member, I listen to our immigrant community, and I want to act to protect them. And so I've supported legislation, a resolution that reaffirmed our commitment to the Keep Washington Working Act, which says that our law enforcement will not cooperate with ICE agents in helping deport people from our community. I've also supported legislation that creates safer spaces for residents, using street festivals as non-public spaces that make an arrest at those festivals an illegal arrest, a warrantless arrest. And so these are absolutely things that are important that we hear at the city council level, that we know are impacting our residents, and that is our job on the front lines. Our federal representatives don't hear the day-to-day impacts that we see on our streets and in our community. And so we need to be standing up and advocating for every person in our community to have a safe, belonging place where they can stay with their families and stay together as a community and reinvest in our local economy.
Chris, your response?
So I would not focus on it, because again, when I'm doorbelling the neighborhoods and people that are at the doors, people are not concerned about this at all. Their top priorities are public safety downtown before ability across Spokane and the homelessness crisis. We need to make sure that we are making competent laws that are coming out of City Hall, because when we do not, we're just wasting people's time. So like with the Keep Washington Working Act, it has actually made this very unknown kind of problem, where people think we're a sanctuary city or we're not. Still, people don't know if we are or not. That puts a target on our back, where we're losing federal funding. And another thing that my opponent should know is that since federal authority supersedes local, there is nothing we can do. Anything that we do at city council level is just a non-binding resolution that's just affirming what is going on, and it does nothing, and it will do nothing. So we need to make sure that we are actually making good policies that don't just have lip service.
Chris, the Journal of Business yesterday reported on a 54-page housing study by the Downtown Spokane Partnership Housing Action Plan, which states that Spokane should adopt a 10-year housing development target of 3,200 more market-rate housing units in downtown Spokane by prioritizing the developments of workforce housing. The study based many of its recommendations on comparable cities such as Boise, Des Moines, Iowa, Cortland, Maine. Have you reviewed this study, and do you agree, at least in principle, with his recommendations for Spokane?
Well, this is a short answer. No, I have not seen the study yet or reviewed it, so.
Your response?
Yeah, I think it's incredibly important to be investing in our downtown. I have not reviewed the entirety of the study, but I've looked at the overview, the executive summary. And these are the types of policies that I've been championing as a council member. We need to address the vacant lots and redevelop those, and I've talked in depth about that. The solutions that we have are about wanting to invest in our community and reinvest specifically housing. I've passed incentive programs. Pave It to People is an incentive program that we're seeing the development of 260 units located by Lewis and Clark High School. Those types of incentive programs are working and investing in our community. My opponent has wanted to roll back a lot of our housing policies to increase the challenges. I'm also concerned about his response about immigration, because as he said in a forum before, he's not concerned about small populations in our community. So if you're not in a small population, as he just said, it doesn't seem to be an interest or concern of his.
And I didn't mean the last question to be a trap question, so I'm going to give you another chance with a little more buildup. So I just got back from Milwaukee-Boston, and the downtown area is vibrant. I felt safe walking with my wife downtown. There was an abundance of housing downtown. 30 seconds on this question for both candidates. Have you been to a similar city, whether it's Milwaukee or Boise or Des Moines, that you think has a right that Spokane can have some takeaways for making our downtown even more vibrant than what it is right now?
Yes, so when I visit Coeur d'Alene, it is almost like you're walking into a different world over there. There is very little homeless. Everything is very well-managed, and the building, what they have there, is good. So those are one of the things that I would go over and talk to Coeur d'Alene and see what they're doing, as well as going down to Boise to make sure that we are actually making good development and good policymaking, so that we are actually making a downtown that is walkable and livable, as well as welcoming to all of our people that want to come down there.
Zach, 30 seconds.
Yep, I've traveled across the country, not just 30 minutes away, and looked at the best resources and the best downtowns across our country. I've studied public policy. I got my master's degree in public policy from Princeton. I've studied urban planning specifically. There are a lot of great resources and tools that we have. I attend conferences as a council member to bring those resources back to Spokane, and that's the types of legislation that I've invested in and will continue to invest in in our community. Some of that includes our parking reform, our incentive programs, changing our family-friendly festival ordinances to bring festivals and make it easier for people to have a vibrant downtown experience.
And because we got off track with those questions, let's do 30 seconds apiece for the next few, because we're almost done with the questions. So transportation and infrastructure. Chris, should the city of Spokane support and participate in light rail projects that connect Spokane International Airport on one end and Coeur d'Alene at the other? If so, what leadership roles should Spokane take in that project?
So we should be focusing on that project when the city has the money. Right now, again, we are in a $13 million deficit, which is going to be really hard to do any future or new projects. We are already actually looking at some of our street calming projects that we're doing, and they're being cut, because we just don't have enough money. Having an alternative transportation to make sure that our metros are connected is very vital and important. Right now, it may not be available, but in the future, we might be able to look at it. As Spokane being a leader in this, we would need to make sure that we are taking lead, because we can actually make sure that we are getting people here and actually activating our economy.
Zach?
So the city doesn't actually fund transit. The SCA is funded by a public transportation benefit area that collects a sales tax charge from a sales tax. So it's not funded by the city. The city budget doesn't impact that. Light rail is an incredibly costly project that we don't really have the bonds, and it makes sense. I, I believe in having a vision for the future and I think that's important to be part of the conversation. But we're making historic investments at Spokane Transit such as City Line, Busrip Transit on the Division Line. And those are the types of investments that provide faster service to more people that makes it less needed to rely on, on cars.
Zach, question to you. Do we need a new jail?
Yep, I've been supportive of the task force that was just created this week that talks about how do we invest in smart justice in our community? And right now, our current jail doesn't have the right resources and the right structure to do it. We have staffing challenges and we have multiple lack of services and providers that are getting connected at our jail. So we need to think smart about our criminal justice system. It's not just the jail, but it's about mental health flex beds. It's about how do we connect people to those resources while they're in jail? So that when they get out of the jail, they're less likely to go back to jail.
Chris?
Well, I'm happy that my opponent agrees with me that we do need a new correctional facility with wraparound services of addiction, mental health and onsite job training, like I said earlier. It is vital that we increase our beds from 600 to 1,200 as well as updating our jails. So not only are the people who are put there feeling safe, but people who work there are feeling safe. I've heard from several people that work there at the correctional facility that it is ungood and is not good because of what's going on there. So we need to make sure that those people are feeling safe and cared for because they are one of the reasons why this correctional facility can function.
All right, continuing on with the equal time, 30 seconds apiece. We're to the secret questions asked by each of the candidates. I've held those in my safe up until today when I broke in and brought them here. So first question is to you, Chris, from Zach. President Trump has suggested using the National Guard to address homelessness in cities across the country and has already deployed troops in Washington DC. If elected, would you support the deployment of the National Guard to Spokane? Yes or no?
If the problem got really badly, then yes, we need to do that because that is his oversight and that is his authority. Because again, at a city council level, we have very limited authority. We make ordinances and non-binding resolutions. So whatever the federal government wants to do, they pretty much can come in and do. We can do nothing that can push back on that. So if they activate the National Guard to do what they need to to clean up the city, then I wouldn't be able to stand in their way.
Zach, your response?
Yeah, I find that really troubling that we might have a council member that wants and asks for the National Guard to come to the city. We're seeing excuses across the country such as Portland and Washington DC where the National Guard is being deployed. I have friends in Washington DC that say it's a giant waste of resources. They're not even able to do the things that Trump is saying. They just walk around, very expensive military uses. I don't believe in a state where we're being policed with people walking around our streets with guns. I believe in being a council member that stands up for our rights and working people who don't want that in our community. And that's what you're going to get as a council member, for me.
Secret question from Chris to Zach. Will you commit to another four years as city council member and not run for another elected position if elected?
Yep, I've been serving our community since I was in high school. I was student body government and created a lot of after school programs to get people invited into our community and our school. I serve as a teacher at a low income school and continue to serve as a teacher. And I've been lucky enough to have the privilege to serve as a council member. I don't know if future opportunities are going to come up, but I'm committed to continue to serve our community. Since I've childhood, that is something that I've done and I expect I will fully do that the rest of my life.
Chris, your response?
Well, as you can see, there was not very a full commitment there. That's what I'm committing to you is I'm going to be on city council for four years and I won't be looking at a higher office. At several other forums that he has been asked this question, he has not given a firm confirmation of a yes. So him saying yep on this one is kind of a bit surprising. So we'll, I guess, see to wait to see what happens. But I don't trust that that's going to happen and that he's not committing to our city because he's looking at higher office that has already been seen and heard throughout this community. And that is what's going to be different about me is my commitment and promise to you all is I will be serving this community for as long as the term has, which is four years.
One last question, 20 seconds each. Hopefully this is an easy one. You have now been on the campaign trail for several months. You've read articles mentioned in each other. You've been through this debate, keeping with the Rotary four way test. Tell me one thing and tell, tell our voters one thing that you've learned through this whole process that you respect about your opponent. Zach, let's go to you first.
Yeah, we've actually known each other since middle school. And so Chris has been a friend of mine for a long time. And I appreciate that you are dedicated and don't give up on things and keep showing up. And so I appreciate that.
Chris?
Thank you, Zach. What I find great about Zach is that he is committed to his community by coming down to City Hall as much as possible. He's trying the best he can with what he has. It's been a very difficult, poor years with the COVID response. And I respect him for going down there and making sure that he's putting his job and his life on the line, especially when it comes to COVID and when that was out there. So I thank you for serving our community and being there for us.
All right, now we are at the point for closing statements. So Chris, you are first. Please proceed.
Well, thank you all for being here today. I appreciate you spending some of your time with us to make sure that you are knowing the city council candidates and knowing what their policies and concerns are so you can vote properly. What you're going to get with my candidacy is you're going to get a dedicated, resilient individual who's going to go up there with the will of the people and not his personal agenda. I will make sure that I am listening to you every day, every week to make sure that you are being heard and your voice isn't lost. We need to make sure that there is a better representation up on city council right now because there's a lot of people who think that their voice isn't being heard. I will bring competent policies to the city to make sure that we are being fiscally responsible, keeping ours downtown safe and vibrant and making sure that we are protecting the heart of our community, which is our small businesses. We need to make sure that we are making Spokane a clean, vibrant and safe city. And that is what you'll get with my candidacy. And that is why I am happy to run for office and I'm willing to work for you because I am your champion. I'm your defender. We are fighting for the soul of our city right now. We need to make sure that we are doing everything and anything possible to make sure that we are making Spokane a place for the future generations like our children as well as prospective families, because that is what Spokane is all about. It's about people. It's about the families. It's about all of us. So thank you all for being here this evening. I appreciate you all.
Zach, your closing?
Yep, thank you for being here today and engaging on these important topics. I just want to remind you that there's concerns about ballots being counted. So make sure to turn in your ballots early and vote early. I'm born and raised here in Spokane and have been benefited from the investment of many people in our community and Spokane in general. I went away for college and chose to come back because it's this investment in our community that I want to make. My peers went off and worked on Wall Street and Capitol Hill. And I chose to come here, being a public school teacher because I care about making Spokane a place that works for everyone, especially our low income and middle income families. And so as your council member, we've delivered results. I've delivered results for you. I've been a champion on affordability issues. We've passed a low income bus fare at STA. We've stabilized housing prices that were escalating. We have year over year permitting at the housing, on housing permits. On our safer streets and safer neighborhoods, we've made investments in drug treatment programs, getting resources to people. We've brought back neighborhood resource officers and patrol cars. We've also made investments in our neighborhoods around street safety. We have improved crosswalks and have a vision for connecting our neighborhoods on biking. Those are the policies I want to move forward. Unfortunately, my opponent does not really have a lot of policies. He's been running for six years and he has sat at a lot of council meetings and has reported those meetings, but doesn't have a lot of solutions to those. The challenges we're experiencing are real.